Okay. Good evening, everyone. It is now 6:32 and I'm gonna call this meeting of the Keep West Rockany Beautiful Committee to... We don't have any business today except for Tammy, who's running the Zoom meeting for us. And thank you to Tammy. Welcome to all of our online viewers, if you're watching us from home. I'm sorry tonight I misplaced the mission statement, so I will not be reading that aloud for everyone. But I think by now you probably have a good grasp of what we do on our Keep West Rockany Beautiful. We do not have any citizens input. Number five on our agenda is announcements. And I have a few, and I'm sure y'all have some too, so. You wanna share?
Um... Well...
My corner with her. Announcements, you have an announcement.
So I guess between now and our next meeting, I can announce that there will be another vendor market on November 1st at 52 East Highway 276, which is the Chalk Camp property. We expect to have 20 to 30 vendors and food trucks and just a fun day.
What time's?
It starts at... So this one's gonna be 10 to 4.
10 to 4.
But they decided setting up in the dark was not fun.
Not bad, no, I'm sure not.
On November 1st.
Especially in the strange place.
Laura, do you have any announcements?
Oh yeah, nothing.
Bethany?
No ma'am.
Well, let me just go ahead and give y'all just a little rundown, for our audience especially. This Saturday is our community-wide trash roundup, if you will, down at the wastewater treatment plant on Rabbit Cove Road. Will start at about 8 o'clock and it'll be finished by noon or when the dumpsters are full. Also, on that same day, the West Rockany Public Library down here is gonna be having their fall yard sale. And they're also having sandwiches and that type of thing. They're also having a book sale down there. I'm not sure of the time on their sale. They usually get started pretty early in the morning. October 25th is Quinn Fest down in downtown Quinlan. For those of y'all that may not have ever gone, they usually generally rough off the streets, barricade them so that people can just walk around the downtown area. It starts at noon on the 25th. And I'm excited to say that on October 29th, the HEB and Rothwell will open. And I was looking at their schedule of all the free things they're giving away starting that day. They have coffee and snacks and donuts and things like that in the morning on their opening date. And then throughout the week through November 1st, they have lots of free things. And instructional, how to cut up the fish and different things. It sounded really interesting what they're gonna be doing. October 31st is the Truck or Treat at the Rockany Fire Department. And that's gonna be from 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock at the fire station. And we did vote last time to participate in that, so we need to start gathering our candy.
I'm sorry, what time did you say this?
6 to 8.
When do we need the candy, honey?
Well, we need to have it at least the day before, maybe.
You just drop it off at the fire department anytime.
Okay.
No, 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 it's ours. It's our candy. It's for us.
Scratch that. That's what we did last year. I guess I gave candy for both. I dropped them off during the...
Yeah, but we're gonna have our own table. And so I got some stuff already.
Okay, so where should we... Where do we drop it off? I guess that's what I'm asking.
Just bring it?
Just bring it.
I'm not gonna...
Bring it to me, I'm going. Okay. Bring it to me.
I'm maybe in Richardson with my friend.
Bring it to me. I'll be there all the entire time, so. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Okay.
That's great.
And then there was another Truck or Treat.
My favorite is Mounds, Fars and Almond Joy.
Me too.
Just so you know.
Me too.
Yeah, the park over here, the city park, is also having a Truck or Treat at the same time, 6 to 8. I saw it on the marquee up front. So I don't... I guess that city and maybe the police department, I'm not sure who's setting that one on. But that's the same night as the one at the fire station. Our next community-wide trash dump will be on November 8th. And I just wanted to let everyone know that I have the cleanup toolkits. They arrive at Rustico's office. So we should have plenty of grabbers and everything.
Wait, 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 this is at the dump? Or this is highway?
No, no, this is highway.
The dump, no, it's the dump. I'm sorry, it's...
The highway?
It is the Fall Sweep, what they call it from Keep Texas Beautiful. So it's Keep Texas Beautiful Fall Sweep, which we do the wastewater treatment plant, the community.
We're not gonna be on the highway?
No, we're not.
No highway.
Okay.
But we are gonna be picking up down Rabbit Cove Road.
I will gladly go walk and pick stuff up.
All right.
She does not want a chair, she doesn't want a seat.
No, I do not.
Okay, that's about all the announcements I had, other than Dwayne and I just came from the park. And our crepe myrtles are not looking too good. The new ones we bought over there at Brumley's, they're looking beautiful. Blooming really good, they're really pretty. We have got to get an attachment, fire department has filled up the water container. So it's full to the top with water. So we have plenty of water over there now in order to water those crepe myrtles. We just need to get the attachment at the bottom, somebody broke it off. And get that fixed so we can hook up the water hose to it.
Where do you get that attachment? Can you get it on Amazon or can you get the hardware?
Yeah, the hardware store.
I'll get that. I don't know what I want.
Yeah, I know what I want.
Since you're gonna be using it a lot, right?
Well, either we are really.
And we also were noticing around the entrance to the park, our two little flower beds on either side of the entrance there, they need some attention. The lumber we put down there, I thought we had used landscape timbers, but I think it must be just like 2x4s or something. And it's rotten and falling apart. And those bushes, roses, Texas sage, I think that's all that's in there, rose bushes and Texas sage. They need to be trimmed too. So what we probably need to do is schedule a workday at some point in time to go down there to the park. We're from the Veterans Garden, we've got a really big dead tree in there. And a lot of weeds and whoever mowed around. And there's lots of grass piled up there. And so it just really needs some attention.
When are we thinking for that?
I do not know. This month is kinda full, but it needs to be handled.
Well, you know, since we don't have a meeting in, well, October's full, we have a meeting. I was thinking we didn't have a meeting next month, but we do. I was thinking in one of the meetings, we could have a workday or work session at the park. It's just lots of stuff going on.
There is lots of stuff this month.
Yeah, next month and the next month. It's just something every weekend.
Yeah.
So can that be... Can that be table till after the holidays or is it...
No, it needs attention now. Now, now, now. It needed attention earlier this summer because we have not had water in that Veterans Garden all summer long. What little bit of rain we had is...
What happened to the sunblock this time?
It hasn't worked. It hasn't worked in two years.
Well, I thought Adriana, I thought they came and got it running one year. Was that been two years ago when we did that?
Yep.
We have bought a new timer, a new water timer, and Billy is gonna install that.
The controller?
Yeah.
Okay.
Actually, the other was gone, I don't think it was at work.
Yeah, I don't know who took it, but it's gone, it's not even in the garden. And I didn't turn on, we opened the water faucet there down in the ground, but I did not turn it on. I'm hoping there's still water coming to that. Cause I went to that first big, the dig, and then there's no water coming out of that faucet.
It may be turned off with that box.
Okay. Well, anyway.
Why did we turn it on for? We turned the water on there for something.
Don't get me the line, I don't remember.
What were we doing? I don't know.
Anyway, well, that is something that we're gonna have to do real soon. There's lots of big weeds, weeds that have grown up to look like trees. And that's gotta be remedied.
Yeah, so in terms of pruning the stuff in the Veterans Garden, I wouldn't even know how to do some of that stuff, cause I've never grown that stuff. So, you know, somebody that's knowledgeable on that needs to definitely be there, but, you know.
Well, it's divide and conquer time.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
I don't mind doing the pruning of the, especially those desert willows, cause they're so pretty when they're trimmed up to look like a tree. They really are pretty. And the sage is pretty good. I mean, it doesn't look like it needs trimming very much.
How's the nut sage or whatever that invasive weed is?
Nut grass?
Nut grass.
It don't look too bad there. Cause it had any rain. It could've worked, but there hadn't been any rain either. But the yepes have got all those that used to be orange, beautiful spiders that came up out of the center of them. They're all dead, so those need to be whacked off. And then, like I said, the things that are just weeds, they just need to be pulled out of there and bagged up. And then somebody needs to go along with the rake and rake all that grass from behind it, where the mowers have just blown it up there against the bricks.
And not blown it away.
And not blown it away.
I don't know if this is feasible or not, but since we're all gonna be up at the park on Saturday, I mean, one of us could break away, go do a little bit, somebody else. Aren't we all gonna be at... Okay, maybe I'm taking the wrong location then.
Yeah, we're at the wastewater treatment plant on Saturday.
Right. One of us could, you know, break away, go and do a little work over there while, you know, we're already near the...
We're not near.
No, we're not near. It's way down here on the other side of town.
Okay, then my location's wrong.
Okay, so if you go down Maze Lane, about Dollar, take a left and you're gonna go down, what, mile and a half?
Couple miles, yeah.
And it's on the right-hand side.
Okay, so it's not by the park, okay, okay. Then I'm way off with my idea.
Yeah, that's the water treatment plant.
The water treatment.
Yes.
That's where they make the water over here. And down there is where they get rid of it.
So Mary, if, okay, so if we all... If we all met and got a plan of what needed to be done and then said, okay, I'm gonna come back and do this, or you're gonna come back and do this, would that be feasible? Or would it be better that we all plan a time where we can all get there and hit it at the same, all at once? What would be best?
Well, firstly, I don't care. I mean, if, you know, you wanna go and rake the grass and bag it up, throw it away, that's fine. If somebody else wanted to go and dig up the...
Well, I just wondered if you needed to guide us to get a plan.
Well, you just go over there and look at it.
And you go.
And see what needs to be done, really. But I don't mind to prune it and just throw the limbs out, pick them up. And we have a burn place at our house, we can burn.
Me too.
So...
Mary, I'll spend some time over there on Sunday.
Sunday?
Mm-hmm, I will. That will be my...
Holler at me, holler at me, Stephanie, I'll come help you.
Okay, so we'll spend some time over there on Sunday.
Okay. Well, hopefully by then we'll have the timer hooked up on the Veterans Garden. And we'll have the adapter to hook up to a water hose. And we're gonna bring a water hose home that we're not using and put it out.
That also disappears.
Yeah, we have a really nice...
I mean, if you put it back out there, it's going to disappear again.
We're gonna take one home, use it and take it back home. That's what we're gonna do this day.
Yeah. Yeah, don't...
But it's such a hassle to bring our water hose every time you wanna water the spray.
Yeah.
And there's no other place we could hide it where somebody...
Do you think the crepe myrtles are gonna live?
Could be, it could.
You see them outgrowing just wild places.
Well, they gotta get established. They haven't had a chance in the team to get established.
These are fewy little fellows.
All right, so, yeah, if y'all wanna do that on Sunday, go down there and take a look and see what you can knock out. I'll go back. We'll get it. I'm not gonna be able to go Sunday.
I think I'm available Sunday too, I'm just trying to look.
Yeah, after 1 o'clock or so.
Over next to you. Yeah, I am footloose.
Okay. Let's go on to our number six. Yeah, sure. Discuss recruiting one other committee member.
I thought you had somebody.
I did, I reached out to Bethany Benton, and I believe she's on vacation right now in Washington DC. And so I got a message saying that she wouldn't be able to attend this meeting. And, but I did send her the application for the... She wanted to know what all was involved, how much time, and if it cost her money to do it and that type of thing. And I, you know, tried to explain to her as much as I could, you know, in a text message, what all we did, so.
And who is she?
She lives down by Kim.
Oh, okay.
Calling next to David Manning.
Yeah, well, David, Randy and Jane were on our committee, she's right there by them. She has a little, like a farm stand. She has eggs out there for people just to come and take. She has tomatoes, she has other kinda stuff. Bethany Benton. And her kids go to Poetry Christian School. And so that came out one time to pick up trash along Rabbit Cove Road as part of their community service hours. So her husband came and brought, well, I don't know how many there were, about 10 or so kids. And they picked a lot of trash that day, so we were happy to have them. Okay, let's move on to number seven, review and approve minutes from September 18th. Sam? I know you weren't here, but I took this... Notes.
Yes, you did a very good job.
Everybody should have a copy.
We adopt the minutes or approve the minutes once everyone has looked at it. I see no corrections. I'll check it.
I'll check at that.
No, she did. It's Kim. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank y'all so much. Is our next one is number eight, the bank statement from September. And I was telling Sue Ellen that we do not have all of our checks. We've written quite a few checks, but on the bank statement, you'll only see two, which was the pumpkins that we bought up at Ogata and the awards for the community improvement and stuff, so. Any questions about the bank statement?
Nope.
Somebody wanna make a motion on that?
I motion to approve it.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous? Okay, this is the bad part here. Number nine, fall plant and pumpkin sale on October 11th at Chamber Park. Roses and tons. Laura, I'm gonna let you start off with, uh, roses and tons.
Tell you. I am gonna be nice. I honestly think that was the biggest waste of time.
I agree.
Manpower. It was sad and I...
And money. I remember a lot of money.
The look on your face when you came, it made me really sad because you were dejected. And this is supposed to be fun for us and uplifting and all that. You were so dejected. And I felt that, I really did.
I was for all of us though.
I really did. I, no, no, I wasn't saying that.
Because most of the other sales we had have been better. And I don't know why this time it was not. Cause we moved it to the chamber thinking maybe get traffic off of Maze Lane, people coming out of the Dollar Store, because we had it before down at Rustico's. And they don't come that way necessarily.
I get it. I really do get it. I just think... I think we're thinking kinda small. I think we need to think a little bit bigger on our fundraisers. And I know it's hard to do that, and I know you get to a rhythm of things. You know, this is what we've done, this is what we're gonna do. But I think we really need to think big.
The only way we're gonna think big is to have a 501(c)(3), and I cannot do that.
Okay, so...
Cause that's the only way you're gonna get people with money to donate to, like a golf tournament or whatever.
So the other day when we were sitting out there, and I called Greg and he explained it to us, we don't have to have that. We really don't. And we can do that, we just have to go figure out how we can do that. So we can have something big like that. It doesn't have to be as complicated as we think it's gonna be. If it was up to me, we'd just be out there just golf tournaments. But there has to be a way to do it, and we don't have to have that 50 whatever. We don't have to have that. So I think we need to think a little broader.
I think we need to find somebody that can come and talk to us and explain to us how we can pull this off. Or maybe do the work prior and not make them come to a meeting, but research it and find out. Because you hear different things. I even did some research and it said, you know, you can't borrow a tax ID number to do a fundraiser and it's...
Yes.
I think we really need to research it.
I wonder who we could get, what kind of person? Would it be a lawyer, would it be a, I don't know, a planner person or? I don't even know.
I will take it on myself to research this and have a report for our November meeting.
I think that's a great idea.
Sound okay?
Yes.
You got her stuff to Tiffany Chapman, she does the community life division. What's her name?
Who?
Tiffany Chapman, that's the one on the last season there is.
Okay. Yeah, she'd be a good person to go through.
Check with her, yeah, start with her.
Yeah, she'd be a good person and she's...
We also had some ideas, didn't we, about making sure around the Easter thing that we set up there? And we did that instead of while there's an event going on. Bigger and better than we were, you know, for the catfish.
We can still do plant sales and stuff like that.
Yes.
But we, you know, we can't count on it to...
To be it.
Fund our projects that we need.
A singular, this is where we are. I don't think we can count on that.
Nope.
Yeah.
So what were our proceeds? Do we have a number?
We don't have a number yet. The reason I don't have a number yet is my daughter is having a garage sale, yard sale. They completely emptied their garage, painted their garage, painted their garage floor. So they're not putting anything back in at the cars.
The car.
And, you know, it puts shelves up and stuff like that. But anyway, Billy is coming tomorrow to my house and he's picking up the plants that are left and the pumpkins that are left. And I was gonna take him to the ladies' club over where I live. And, but my daughter thought that she'd have better luck where she lives on Highway 36. She's right on 36. And so she's gonna have a lot of stuff out there and she's gonna take the plant. And I've got stickers with price tags out on like $5 or $8 or whatever, and we'll slap them on there and let her sell them for us.
Well, good.
And so that's why I don't have a figure for you. But I did sell, uh, how much to the neighbor? $40 and then another $10?
Yeah.
And she bought a bunch of stuff and then bought all of the crown thorns. She wanted all of them. And then she invited me over to her house and I could see why. She has a beautiful greenhouse and plus sunroom in the back of her home and it's just full of plants. I mean, it's just beautiful, all the plants she has are so pretty. But anyway, I think we're gonna get rid of the rest of them. I mean, they'll have to be at a discount, of course. But I don't want them rotting underneath my car.
No, of course not.
So if y'all are in agreement with that, I'm just gonna let Billy come and pick them up tomorrow and take them over there and let my daughter sell them.
Yes, absolutely.
Friday and Saturday, I think.
Absolutely, where'd she live?
On 36, 50 and 53.
That was Yowzall Town, right?
No.
Didn't Yowzall live there?
We lived there when we first bought it, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When you sold it, or your daughter?
We bought it.
For them.
For them.
But anyway.
Such a mommy and daddy.
Yeah, they've done a really beautiful job at that home, so, anyway.
Okay.
All right, so in addition to the plant pumpkin sale, the fact that we didn't have anybody show up, that was what was so disheartening to me. Because we've always had people from civic clubs, people from the community, even our forward members have come. And we didn't have that this time, we didn't have...
Why do you think that is?
I don't know. And then when Chris McKev came, you know, he sat there for a few minutes and, you know, and I thought, well, maybe Chris...
Well, he's...
But anyway, yeah, he's a guy.
He made an appearance.
Yeah, he did, yes.
Good thing.
Yes, because nobody else did.
Well, and what I really liked him saying was him talking to his people, city council people, fire department people. He wants people to show up, somebody at every single event that, not just we have, that is in the city, and they should.
They should.
And they should, and I was really grateful that he showed up. I mean, that was really stand-up, whether he bought anything or not.
Yeah.
Showing up is half the battle.
Yeah.
It really is. And that was, I just thought that was really good. And he has, um, he's thinking big. And that's what we need to do, we need to think big along with him. Cause I think he could, I think he could do some really cool stuff. And I think we can too.
All right, so number 10 is the first City Rock'em City, which is another thorn. Go ahead, Dwayne.
Maybe we should've kept those crown of thorns planted.
And just wore limbs, we could just wear them.
Okay, we have identified a property down almost across the street from Rancheros. It's called Greater Vision Church, right across the highway.
Yeah.
And we've made arrangements with them to have a spot to put our sign. And we have agreed to pay them $300 a year, a year.
Yeah, that's good.
So we took this idea to the city. Yeah, that's all I'm gonna say about that, cause there's people watching, okay? That was on November, no, that was on October 2nd. Here it is, October the... Uh, that was on November, no, that was on October the second. Here it is, October the, what?
Sixteenth.
We have not yet heard one word from the city attorney, not one word. Her suggestion was we buy it. We can't buy it.
Yeah.
We can't buy.
And besides that, the church don't wanna sell it.
And so then why do we need the city attorney to help us?
She has to provide a lease.
A legal document.
A whole harmless agreement.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's what I, I have my.
Well, yeah, I get that part, but I mean, does, do we?
Well, we're gonna move forward without that.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, this is ridiculous.
Well, Chris told me that he was going to, uh, or he did, uh, send her a follow-up because I, I copied Chris and I copied, uh, Mary and I can't remember who else I copied. And I B C C all of our committee here when I followed up because I had not heard from her. And, uh, he said that he had forwarded and says, what do we need to do to get this going? So, maybe that little shove will help to get it going because we need to get it on the ground.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I feel bad that it's sitting over there in Emery in his yard.
It is so pretty.
It's beautiful.
It's so pretty and it's, uh, you know, I'm so afraid that maybe they would knock it over or something because it's, it's not, you know, on a slab. It's not stable.
Yeah. So, instead of going through an attorney, could you go through a real estate agent?
No, we're just gonna do it ourselves. There's enough information on the website that we can find it and do it ourselves.
Between us and the church?
Yes.
Okay.
The church doesn't really even want anything. We wanna do it because we wanna protect them.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, yeah.
So, who's responsible for the fine interest clause? Is that gonna be an issue?
Mary told me it would come under the city's liability policy.
So, we can't, I mean, can we do this ourselves and not have?
Well, we could either, we could either keep waiting for another month and a half or two or we could take them by their horse and get it done.
Well, I know, but I mean, we don't need the city's.
I don't think so. All we need is an agreement between us and the church. And because we are us, we do follow under the city. That's why we contacted the city attorney.
And that was, and she just made a suggestion.
Yes.
It wasn't like, this is what you have to do.
Well, that's what they do. They, they help you think of the what if that we may not be thinking and that was the whole harmless.
Here's, here's my problem with that. When I told her, we can't do that. We can't afford to do it. The city can afford to do it. The city doesn't need to do it. We've got permission from the owner of the property. All we need to do is get a whole harmless agreement to protect their, their interests, period. Her answer was buy it.
No, we cannot afford to buy anything and a survey or anything like that. And, uh, I'm sure the church does not want to have to give up a little corner of their property.
What's the worst that could happen? Seriously, what's the worst that could happen?
We're gonna, we're gonna get on with this. We can't just keep waiting.
Yeah, we can't keep waiting on somebody.
It's gonna be made for months and months and months and, uh, it needs to be out there for the.
But we are insured under the city. Like if somebody hit the sign and the sign crashed into the church, where the city's insurance would cover up, cover the repairs.
If she says that it would be under the city's liability insurance.
Okay.
Well, it's gonna be in a location where you're gonna have to fall out of the sky to hit it. No, I'm serious.
All right.
Yeah.
That's good.
And it's gonna be at least almost a hundred feet east of the church. That's where your property line is. That's where we wanna put it.
Oh, that's good. That's good. Closest to the bridge we can get.
Closest we can get.
Do it.
Okay.
Without it being S R A property.
Yeah.
We wanna stay away from them because they didn't want us to do it there. Okay, um, we're gonna follow along those lines with that and, uh, hopefully get that put down pretty soon. Um, our next thing is the other location on private property, the city, bucket city Wilton sign. And we wrote a letter to the guy that has the property at three oh nine nine. Um.
Highway two seventy six.
Yeah, Highway two seventy six or maybe called, uh, Phantom Parkway down there. Is the, uh, his name is, uh, Mister Robinson, Robinson. And, uh, sent him this letter back on September twenty-fourth.
What's that by? Mary, what's that?
Where is it?
Ketto, Kep- Ketto.
Okay.
Right, almost.
It's not that triangular piece you wanted all along, is it? Oh, really? Okay.
But his property, there's a street there, a little dirt street.
Uh-huh.
And this is the property to the, right, you're looking.
Yeah, across from where we were looking.
Okay, so you have welcome to West Walken East, just a little bit west of that.
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Okay, I know exactly where that is.
But again, uh, I've been sending you the picture.
You know, the thing that just kills me about this is these signs are so beautiful, so bad, definitely.
Why wouldn't you want to have?
When they hit the ground, the city's gonna go crazy. They're gonna say, oh my God, this is beautiful.
They are stunning.
They are. They really are.
What's that guy's name?
Robinson.
So, have you heard back from him?
Oh.
I have not. I have not. I think he may be possibly an investor because his address is on Greenville Avenue in Dallas.
Oh.
So, it may be an investor, but that's, that's what's on the cat and that's all I have to go back.
But we do have a good friend that, uh, still lives in the area and she sold that property across the street where we're talking about. And she's the one that recommended we contact those people. Stella.
So, maybe.
That is a little bit out of the city limits.
Yeah, right across the street.
So, maybe it's Stella that contacted.
Yeah, she wanted us to do it, but I don't mind doing it. She's like, I gotta find it.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Maybe she can run it down.
Well, I don't know what they sold. That's been years ago.
It might've been sold by a time or two after that.
Maybe.
Anyway, we're still looking for that location, that second sign, so.
Okay.
I don't know where else to look, um, because the attorney family said no.
The second sign has not been made. Is it?
It's in progress. It's, it's got the pedestals, the, the boxes, you know, and it has, uh, that part. It just doesn't have the, all the rest of the stuff.
All right, well.
So.
BBC, Tuesday continues.
That's right. Uh, number twelve is going to be our sea wide cleanup at the wastewater plant uh, this coming Saturday from eight to noon. And who is gonna be available to help with that?
I'm available. Do we need to all be there for the four hours? Let's do two hour shift.
Whatever, whatever y'all wanna do.
I absolutely.
But I will be there the whole time.
I think so.
Well, Mary shouldn't have to be. Well, she's in charge of the money and in the.
Yeah, but that's, you know.
I mean, you don't have to be. I mean, whoever closes could take the cash and sign.
I'll be there anyway.
I'll be there at nine. We can stagger. Yeah. Ten, whatever. Well, don't you set up about seven? Yeah, yeah. They open those gates at seven thirty.
I've been opening them before we're there.
Okay, so what time do we need to set up?
I'll be there around seven.
Okay.
The city will be there probably about the same time.
I will be there with you.
At seven?
Yep.
So, we don't, we don't, we don't have him open the gate until we're there.
Well, Dave has opened it before and.
Yeah, that's cause we weren't there.
I've come so many times and, and before anybody got there, not so many times, but more than twice.
Yeah.
And.
More of the times, y'all.
Uh, and there are people already unloading their vehicles and, you know, so they let them in. As soon as they show up, they just let them in.
Okay, so I'll come at seven with you.
Okay.
And we can get set up. And then, yeah, just let's stagger ourselves through the day, so.
And be sure to bring a chair if you wanna sit.
Nobody has to be there for.
And then if you, you know, I've got the grabbers. I've got bags. Those are all came in Rusty Oaks the other day.
No, I still have my grabber and my vest because I took them home.
All right.
Is it her Halloween costume?
Oh, my gosh.
Towel bag of trash onto your back.
Since you live down there.
They'll just think I'm in trouble.
Okay, so what do you say? Seven to nine thirty and then nine thirty to twelve.
Tomorrow would.
So, that's two and a half hours each shift.
Yeah, yeah, cause Kim said she can be there at nine.
Yeah, I'll tell her. I'll say nine thirty.
Yeah, just come at nine thirty.
So, we're gonna do seven to nine thirty, nine thirty to twelve. Two and a half hours each shift.
And, um.
I'll do nine thirty to what, to twelve if you.
I mean, I do like the show of all of us there and what we're doing and going, but I don't think that that's necessary.
Nobody cares.
No, really?
It'd be like, y'all shirts are too bright.
You bunch of weirdos.
The Big Bird shirt.
Big Bird.
No, I love the shirts.
Yeah, they're great.
I do too.
They're very.
And it's washed, I washed this one three times, you know, and I hope it's not coming.
Did you put it in the drawer or no?
No, I hung it up on the handle.
Yeah, that's what I do with.
And I wash it inside out like.
I followed the instructions.
Yeah, yeah.
No, that'll, that'll.
Sharp.
Yeah, it was really cute.
Stephanie, are you?
I think the opposite.
Are you working?
Yeah, I'll be there the whole day.
Well, uh, let me just tell you what we do. Uh, we do check IDs or water bills. Uh, they have to be in the water service area. And, um, so there's some people like in our parks that we manage, uh, Rusty Oaks especially, uh, they're, they don't get a water bill, but they should have a driver's license. That's the, you know, west.
Sure.
But, um, anyway, we check their IDs. Uh, we will have a donation jar there if they would like to donate. Uh, this is all free for the, for the, uh, residents though, so, um, and I don't have, I was trying to look to find some kind of little freebie to pass out. I have not had time to order anything. Um, but I do have a few cans left and a few.
I don't think it matters, Mary. I really don't.
They have a Halloween candy.
They have a Halloween candy.
Throw some.
Well, I'd just like to tell them that we appreciate them coming out and, and. And, uh, try to clean up their.
Yes.
Okay, so what's the ruling for those, what you'll, if you're saying you'll be there the whole time? There are some that are known to make multiple deliveries.
They will.
Is that good, is that okay?
Yeah, cause the, some of these people are rehabbing a whole house themselves, you know?
Yeah.
They got grandma's house they inherited and they're trying to clean it up. So, they may make two trips down there, bring in old furniture. Now, they can only bring one mattress set. And, uh, so that's it. One mattress set per household. And, uh, no refrigerators, no freezers, no air.
So, no appliances.
With no.
Cooling.
We just can't take a.
You can't have any.
Like a.
Free on.
Nothing with cooling in it. Okay.
Nothing with any kind of cool. So.
No contractor. No contractor.
No contractor.
No contractor.
That's cool.
We, we had somebody one time that did a whole roof job.
Are you kidding?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, if they pull up with a roof. I'm gonna be on that.
But anyway, uh, that is, that is. This one here, uh, of course, is the first one for the fall and it should be a good one. I hope so. Um, and of course, we'll have public work down there that'll smash it down with a front end loader and, uh, they will help people that can't load a sofa or something like that, cause there are some elderly people that bring stuff. Might help them, obviously, but, uh, so they will have, you know, some help, yeah.
Like three or four guys, usually.
Yeah. So, anyway, that's, uh, that's eight to noon or to women dumpsters are full. And, uh, Kim's gonna check on the status of the dumpsters when she goes home or tomorrow. Um, number thirteen is discuss the Halloween at the fire department, six to eight. They lots of candy. And, um, Kim and I did it last year and, uh, so. Yep.
Okay, so I'm sorry. Tell me again, where do we take these? Cause I'm, I'm not gonna be your Halloween.
Stephanie's gonna go.
Stephanie's gonna take them to it. Okay.
Yeah.
Stephanie. Remember, I want the mounds and the onyx.
I will find you for those.
It's gonna be a long line.
That's right. That's right. Yeah, and it's running us. So, she'll be there to help us set up. All we're doing is just put a table out with some.
Okay.
I can do it early instead of, and I've got time for candy like I did last year. I have bags and bags and bags already. I'm gonna go to the store and grab one.
I will say this, you have to have all the, all enjoy it well.
Of course we can't wait with no longer.
I'm, I'm a mounds guy.
Well, the reasons went fast and sold us the candy corn that Ellen brought. We ran out of candy corn.
Mm-hmm. I love candy corn. I do too, but that's surprising. Throw some of those circus peanuts in there. Nobody will take them.
What, what I did, and I bought stuff that people would ask for non chocolate or if we had animal crackers. I had one lady ask me if we had anything. She had a kid that was on a sugar diet and I had a fruit snack. And.
Oh. I, I should've thought of that. My grandson can't have any of that. I should've thought of other children.
Okay, very good.
Seriously, cause like you don't think of that.
You don't think of that at all.
Okay, item fourteen. Um, I talked to Adriana and she's going to make our flyer for the Christmas home decorating contest again and conduct a live presentation. Um, we've already ordered the signs from Jim at Vital Signs. Uh, he said he would keep it at a, at a hundred dollars. And, uh, what we're gonna need is some prizes for each winner. And we need to put dates, get dates for the contest.
Like what kind of prizes are you talking?
What did we get last year? Last year we did twenty-five, twenty-five and fifty, was that right? Were they like Visa cards or? Yeah, because Melvin we did like a hundred dollars, but he was the only winner when we started giving first, second, third place. I thought we did twenty-five, twenty-five.
Like?
Gift card, just a gift card.
Just a gift card to.
I think we did Home Depot, Hobby Lobby.
Well, we did. Home Depot, Hobby Lobby.
Okay, so.
So, we just need.
We just three, three prizes.
Three prizes.
Twenty-five, twenty-five, fifty again. And what we did last year, I think we just lost it and Mary went out on, gave her cash. We divided it between us and then we just gave her cash.
Yeah, it didn't come out of our budget because we don't, we don't have it in the budget.
Have we tried to get them to donate?
Pardon me?
Have we tried to get, um, like Home Depot or Lowe's to donate?
Jane tried one year to get.
And they said no.
No, it's the corporate.
It is. The, the corporate ones are hard to do.
It's a lot of work for twenty-five.
Brim and Son will really help us out. They, they, they have a lot to do. So, we might could try to hit, hit them up and see if they could do something for the home decorating contest. I don't know. Uh, those people could buy tension cords or, you know, whatever they need to, to decorate their house. They might have lights and stuff. I don't know what Brim and Son would have in the way of.
They have a lot.
Well, we will have already, they will have already decorated by then.
Yeah, so, but I'm thinking for the following year or for something else, maybe they would.
Okay, so, yeah, so if we.
Something.
Then it'll be like sixteen or seventeen dollars. And we're right around it.
So, you're thinking twenty-five, twenty-five and fifty?
First place. And then twenty-five and twenty-five, we do first, second, third. And I do wanna make sure this year that we don't do the like heart. We pick first place. The year that we did the like, the heart and the smiley face and this, I was so confused. Cause there was hearts and every one of them and likes and every one of them. Do you remember that? And we had to go through and count all the hearts and then he had to go back to me and count all the likes and it was just like, that was so confusing.
Well, and Adriana realized that, you know, from the past, so I'm, I'm thinking that maybe she will come up with some other method.
Okay, good.
To have the count.
Cause the community does really like that. That's one thing they do enjoy and they do vote. They vote. We get a lot of.
It's fun.
And it's a happy thing, it's Christmas.
Yeah, yeah.
Great.
It's fun.
Houses were beautiful.
So I really liked going around and looking at them and it was fun.
Yeah, that's fun, yeah, that's one. So we're gonna, uh, do the twenty-five, twenty-five and fifty.
Right.
And last year we gave them a week to vote, are we still thinking we're gonna do that for sure?
Yeah, I was looking, I don't have it with me, uh, last year's flyer, uh, but it had had somewhere like the thirteenth or so is the cutoff.
And we had like, we had, we gave them like five days or so to vote and then we awarded it that weekend, you know?
Yeah.
So we could award it maybe this weekend before?
Yeah.
Or do you wanna even go even earlier? I think. I think from here.
Yeah.
In here.
Maybe twentieth?
Maybe the twentieth? Does anybody get, are y'all gonna move it to?
Um. I'm gonna have my family, my youngest son, his family in, and we're doing Christmas with them on the twentieth, that weekend, but I mean.
Are we awarding on the twentieth, is that what you said?
Yeah, I mean.
We could decide on the twentieth.
Yeah, yeah, that should be fun, like in the evening, well, yeah, in the evening would be, of course, when it's lit up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we could go back to.
Okay, so we'll award.
What time do you think you guys?
Maybe like, uh, I'm.
Yeah.
Starting in the dark, yeah.
Eight.
And so they would give them, uh.
Seven o'clock?
Between the thirteenth, if she uses the thirteenth, they would give them a whole week.
Yeah.
To nominate their neighbor, nominate themselves, drive around, nominate somebody in another neighborhood. Um.
Yeah, so she could put it at maybe the thirteenth or if you award it.
Okay.
That would work.
Yeah, I told her we would be talking about it, so that's, that's it, I'll let her know.
Have we done the different subject, I'm so sorry to stop her tin cup and have.
No.
Okay.
Because the sign is broken and we gotta get the other sign, which is down at Rusty Oak, now I do have the plaques already and I have a gift card for Sherri Lynn in Troy, so.
There is, uh.
Oh, that's last year, yeah. See, that one, the cutoff was the thirteenth. Nomination, doesn't it say at the very bottom? Nomination.
Yes, five o'clock on December thirteenth.
And that's a Saturday before, before we award it, the, the twentieth. The thirteenth is on a Saturday and then it's the twentieth. But that's what we were talking about anyway, was having to cut off on the twen, on the twentieth and letting them go, doesn't do that Friday.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's like.
We can give them a full week to vote.
City officials, keep us away from the beautiful board members while they, uh, exempted from nominations. Um. But they're still encouraged to decorate, of course. So. Yeah, and it's everybody in the water, uh, tr, water recipient.
Okay.
Again, not just city, it's people that get water from us in the outline subdivision. Okay, that sounds good, and I'll get back in touch with Adriana and get that, get that going. Um, last time we talked about marketing items like the stickers that y'all have and boat key rings and new pens. And I found those kinds of things on Amazon and, um, Oriental Trading. But we never set a budget for buying any marketing items. So, um, what are y'all's thoughts on that?
We need them for this upcoming budgeting year because we've already spent and we're not producing our pants possibly. So my suggestion would be to limit what we spend, so we do agree to have a big fundraiser, we have money whenever that one comes.
That's a good idea.
But this would fall under marketing. It has, you know, it has its own category, I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure in the budget.
So how much is in the marketing budget?
How does that figure?
Yeah, and I very well organize how it's done.
But money we have to spend.
That's money that's allocated for us to spend for this, for this next year, fiscal year, October one to. September thirty-third, thirtieth.
Here we go, this is.
I'm so glad you're doing that and not me.
The treasurer.
We'd be broke.
My filing is real.
Is that an old one?
Uh, this is not the new one, but. No, because the one we had, seven thousand dollars was the budget on it, so. But I don't see, on this old one, we didn't have one for, um. We had size miscellaneous, then we had another miscellaneous down here. But I don't see, I saw office supply. And, um. I, I don't see.
If we don't have a line, Adam, just for marketing, I don't wanna spend money just to spend it, I think we need to because we're having such a hard time making it right now and replacing it. My debt tells me we, we buy with necessity and then we just kinda hang on so we can do something to bring more.
And the, the phone little, you know, the boat keys and stuff, can wait till next year, maybe when we're beginning, you know, we're.
Boat season, yes.
Is it not now?
Because you're really not having any events that really can happen. For the cleanup, the cleanup you give them, um, but that's all we have left until spring, right?
That's all we have.
Yeah, I, yeah, absolutely agree. It's not an urgent need right now.
Okay. All right, well, that's.
Hi, do we wanna just say we're gonna add that or?
Yeah, so, as it does say approved budget, so let's just, uh. Someone can make a motion to.
I motioned to table that.
Second.
Bye.
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 Thank you both very much. All right, uh, discuss the proof canceling the December twenty-fifth and the January twenty-sixth meeting. And I was.
Can we just go ahead?
Break on that. Because we, we've done it the past year.
Years.
Yeah, every year, we have three or four years of cancel.
So, Lorraine, you're one, I'm two, everybody approved?
Approved, okay.
It's just so hard. That time of year.
So we will not have, we will have a meeting in November. And that date is.
Um, I have it written down here, this is the twentieth?
Yeah, I think it is.
Yeah, because Thanksgiving's the next.
What day is it, Thursday, twentieth?
Yeah, the twentieth. And then we won't have the December meeting and the January.
But we will have the.
So back in in February.
Yeah.
The only thing we'll be doing in December is descending awards for the first, second, third place. Home decor.
How fun.
I know, it is fun.
Yeah.
Hot chocolate.
Discuss little free library, Sue Ellen.
Oh, our little library, um, Kim very graciously brought books.
And I've been using books, lots of books.
I was about to say, um, and you brought adult books, correct?
I did, I brought children's and adult, and I straightened it up.
Yeah, okay, so I straightened it up yesterday.
It was kinda bare today.
Really?
It was full when I came over here, yeah.
Yeah.
Because I, I straightened all the books up yesterday and there was only one row, I usually try to do double rows if I can. Um, but I have now children's book and Lorraine has a lot of adult books that I can get from her. So I will be stocking it up soon.
Okay.
I just wish people would bring books back, you know, I don't, you know.
Yeah, nobody ever leaves a book.
No, they don't.
They always take books.
And even if it's, you know, bring back the one you bought, you took, bring back another book of yours that you've done with. But anyway, I may try to do a little laminated sign that says, see?
History.
Well, I think our sign does say take a book, leave a book.
I think it does say that.
But that was the premise of it in the beginning when we first got it fourteen years ago, or how long ago it's been.
Wow.
To take a book and leave a book, so. Why don't you have a social media update for us?
Uh, I, we're still there. Uh, we have a total, a total following of seven hundred and twenty-seven people.
Woo, and two came to our plant.
And two gave our plants, so right this minute, right this minute, a hundred and twenty-one people are watching what we're doing somehow, some way, yes. We're following, I guess is the word I'm looking for.
Okay, well, that's good.
That's where we are.
We'll keep plugging away.
And have we checked to see if the updates on administration came through for you guys? That, um.
Jane changed it for she was administrator and you were administrator.
We had checked.
I have not checked it, no, I have not added anybody else to it.
Okay.
Sorry to say, we're really busy with our jobs, so anyway. We will get around to getting that done so that everybody can have access to post and do things. Um.
Yeah, that's what we, we need to do that, everybody needs to be able to post though.
Yeah, I know they do.
Yeah.
Future agenda items?
Okay, I think that we need to move forward with figuring out.
Yeah, I was just about to say, I'll have some kind of explanation on.
And if you need help with that, I will be glad to help you, but I think we need to.
Well, Tiffany Chapman is a great place to start, I love that idea and, and, uh, do we know if the city is a five oh one C three?
Well, they're not.
The city is not, what is a five oh one C three? It's a nonprofit classification for tax exemption and stuff like that.
Thank you.
That's a real condensed version of what it is. So.
And that, that's what Greg was trying to explain the other day, because he has looked into it because of all of our stuff. He is knowledgeable about it.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
So what else besides the golf tournament?
I think we could make enough on a golf tournament.
I agree.
And Greg thinks the same thing, because you could throw a scramble together in no time. You could throw, I mean, they have holes that you have to do blah, 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 and you do blah, blah, and you pay money, I think we could do enough on a golf tournament that we could make a decent amount of money.
And it won't hurt so bad if our plant sale isn't real successful, you know, that's our, that's our big hope, you know? And, uh, we just kinda didn't work out this year.
It did not work out this year.
We do know the golf tournament will have to be in the next four years, so we have plenty of time to plan and prepare and.
It takes a while.
It takes a while, and Greg was saying something, which I thought I ran by Troy, about we're gonna write off two hundred and fifty of it for the market or whatever. And all we need is something from the city, the way I understood it, and I think that was something that Chris would make it possibly to do. Um. I'm just following the city, it's just the city doesn't have a tax non stat, so two fifty's not like, I mean, it's a lot, it's not a lot, I mean, companies spend that on advertising.
Exactly.
So. You know that, so.
I think that could be a really big fundraiser and then we don't have to do the little piddly stuff.
Yes.
Well, we still want our beautification projects.
Well, yes, and no, 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 absolutely, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying get rid of, um, us ever selling plants again, I'm saying.
It's just we just don't have to rely so heavily.
Exactly.
Uh. I know this is out of order and I might not should talk about it, but we haven't really talked about the tree giveaway and are we doing that again and?
I would hope so.
Well, so, okay, so can we talk about it or no?
Not right now.
No, I don't think we can talk about it.
So that's a future.
You can talk about putting it off of your agenda.
Yeah, let's put the tree giveaway on the agenda and the golf tournament, uh, five oh one report.
Yeah, but those would be two really good things to bring up for next time, anybody else have something they would like to?
Well, I think, um, when we come back from, you know, in February, we're getting towards the Easter time, so we need to talk about having, I would like to see some kind of booth or something set up out there at the park when they're doing the Easter egg hunt and all that, um.
Well, Chris did say that, uh, Saturday was talking about, uh, uh, Friends of the Park. That did the, um.
It Christmas thing or market?
The market on the lake.
Market on the lake, yeah.
Market on the lake, yes, and that there is still supposedly money, uh, in the city, uh, coffers here. Uh, for that market on the lake, it, I guess, never got used or what have you, but they, they charge so much for a vendor. Um, and then they gave nonprofits, I think they gave them a free table, um.
Yeah, Chris said that money would just sit in a bank account.
So.
I'd like to, I'd like to talk about all those options too for getting close to, you know, that time.
At the time of the Easter egg hunt.
Yes.
Uh, would be the perfect time when you've got a crowd of people out there.
Okay, so that's raffle agenda in that time? So can we, uh, see if somebody can research that so we can give a report in November on it? And because we won't be convening until February?
Well, it's not that Chris and them to the thought of their bill have tables up there, we just need to be prepared, I would think. We meet in February to start getting.
Okay, okay.
Right.
It's also the first weekend in April, right?
Although for the Capris Festival, we do that together pretty quick.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, I think he gave us a date of April, or somebody gives it April.
I, yeah, I, um. Easter is April fifth.
April fifth. So.
Sure is.
So then we're gonna do it on the third. Isn't that what he said, Saturday the third?
Yeah.
So if we meet in February, we have February, March.
Saturday is the fourth.
Friday the third. I mean, twenty-seventh.
So, the fourth for the Easter.
Wait, wait, we're in the wrong.
I'm in the wrong year, hold on, the fourth is on a Saturday. You're right.
You're thinking, you, you were saying they did the day before.
I was thinking.
Easter egg hunt the day before, okay, that makes sense.
But we have our February meeting and our March meeting, we just need to talk about it in our next meeting and figure out what we're gonna do so we can, we know that's on our plate. When we start getting our raffle items, so when we, it's gonna be the ground back and pick a little stuff like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so one thing that, this is on me, I should have done this. Mary, I think we need to, when we get our, um, raffle items from people, I think we need to send out thank you notes.
Hmm.
Pain in the butt, but just to acknowledge.
I, yeah, I don't think it'd be hard, you know?
I, and I would be glad to do that, I just, I, I think of it periodically and think, I wish I'd done that and we didn't do it.
Yeah.
That is a good idea.
Just to show appreciation.
I, I know, and I've told people, as they win, uh, a prize, be sure you thank.
Yes.
The company, like Rumenson or, uh, Dales, thank them for.
Because then it's not so awkward when I go back and ask for other stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, because really, I mean, people wanna be.
Yeah.
I don't know if they even care, uh, uh, you know, I don't know.
Because we've donated before and we've gotten thank you notes from where it says thank you for support and it's all typed out and then you have the employee sign around it. Where it'd be thank you for, you know, keep us walking.
Yeah.
And we just signed.
And we should just have a stack of those.
Yeah. I'll look and see how much there are.
Because it shouldn't be too.
I wouldn't think it'd be too much.
Too much to have, but, you know, just a little card. Too much to have it, you know, just a little card printed or something. I don't know, just to.
That's a good idea.
Say thank you.
I'm online.
So I'm gonna come back around next.
I know. Hey, remember me?
Remember?
Our future agenda items.
Yes. Definitely put it on there. Why ain't anything else other than still working on our side?
Yeah, all going. That's really a project I'd like to see halfway with the bed.
Yes, definitely would. Okay.
I just wanna see it up. It's so pretty.
Yeah, but we adjourn.
Thank you, Pam. First, Pam. Second, best, Stephanie.
Aye.
Hi.
And we are adjourned at seven forty-two. Seven twenty-two.